The President. The Council now becomes Committee of the whole Council to consider the statute law miscellaneous provision, Bill 2019. Members may refer to appendix to the script for the debate and voting arrangements for the bill. Members have been informed that a committee will conduct a joint debate on the clauses and the amendment. I now propose a question to you that the following clauses stand part of the bill. Yes, Mr. Wu Chih-wai? I ask for a call. Thank you. I propose the question that the following clauses stand part of the bill. Clauses 1 to 125. Secretary for Justice will move an amendment which seeks to amend clause 6. Members may refer to the appendix to the script for details of the amendment. Members may now proceed to a joint debate on the clauses and the amendment. I'll first call upon the secretary to speak, but she's not required to move her amendment at this stage. Then I will call upon members to speak. Upon the conclusion of the joint debate, the committee will first vote on clauses with no amendment standing part of the bill, and then the amendments. Secretary for Justice. Chairman. I will move my amendment later to clause 64 of the bill as set out in the paper circularized to members. As I explained earlier, the purpose of the amendment is to ensure that the arrangement, reargument arrangement under section 34b5 of the High Court ordinance apply to a C A duty constituted under either sections 34b3 or 34b4 to hear appeals or applications. The bill's committee has no objection to the amendment. I call upon members to support the amendment. Dr. Fernando Zhang. Chairman. In this round, I will focus on the amendment to the High Court ordinance. Now, one of the contentions here is to turn a 3 J bench to 2 J bench to hear appeals and applications from a 3 judge bench to 2 judge bench of the C A. This reduction in the number of judges may compromise the higher standard of fairness, which was set by case laws and also part of a legal basis. The whole thing originated from appeals related to non-refundment cases and having a backlog with the High Court ordinance. It has taken a long time due to lack of manpower resources to deal with appeals or applications for leave of judicial review. And then, this way has been used to reduce the demand of manpower so that the whole process can be expedited. Well, there is no contention about expediting the hearings. Now, the logic is there may be claimants who claim that they will be subject to torture or persecution if they are to be repatriated. Well, we provide safeguards in the basic law as well as our human rights ordinance. So the court is very clear. Now, if we are not sure whether these people will be subject to persecution upon repatriation, then they should not be repatriated. And some experts are required to deal with the matter very meticulously. And if the process is not properly dealt with, then the claimants will feel their justice has not been done for them, and they will resort to all sorts of judicial proceedings, including seeking a J R with the High Court so as to make their claims to the court. If the vetting procedures are clear to them that justice has been done. Now, Dr. Fernando Zhang, we are now in committee stage. In the past few minutes, you have been repeating what should be said in the second reading debate, including the pros and cons of the bill. So please return to the clauses. Now, I just wanted to supply the background where we have been on this bill for two weeks. We are very familiar with the background already, so please come back to the debate. As I said, right from the beginning, the most controversial point is to reduce the number of judges. Now, would that necessarily mean an enhancement in efficiency? I have to make it clear, but now we are studying the clauses. So please come back to the debates on the clauses and please don't continue to comment on the pros and cons of the bill as should be done in the second reading debate stage. Well, the proposal here is to reduce the number of judges, and I am trying to fill in the background by commenting on the pros and cons. I feel that there are more downside to this for a sound legal procedure. Of course, there is no reason why we should undermine it because we have a backlog of cases and we undermine a well-designed proceedings or legal proceedings. And this is ridiculous, and this is putting the cart before the horse. And that's why I must explain very clearly that the focus of the bill is wrong and is out of proportion. We try to address an issue which should be dealt with elsewhere. Instead, we are using legal proceedings to address the problem. And this amendment is going to affect a lot of decisions. All judicial review, the leave, applications for leave, and also appeals will be affected. So not just non-refundment cases would be affected. So I think this is out of proportion. We should not throw the baby out together with the water. And so, the problem doesn't lie with the High Court. Rather, is the proceedings before that. If these procedures are properly dealt with, let me remind you once again, Dr. Fernando Zhang, you already are repeating your arguments. May I remind you that we are now in the committee stage considering the clauses, not the pros and cons of the bill? Please come back to the debate. Of course, we are considering the clauses. But the clauses are about using a 2 J A bench to hear and determine applications and appeals instead of a 3 J A bench. So I am commenting on the implications as a result of this change. If I do not make this clear, how can I explain to the public my position on this bill as well as the clauses? So I have to point out where the problem lies. Of course, the clause is very simple, from 3 to 2. And then, of course, in terms of resources required and also the whole process may not be as safe. And then, when the bench cannot come to a unanimous view, then a 3 J A bench will have to be reconstituted to hear the case again. So are you sure that this arrangement will improve the efficiency? Of course, we have seen cases when two judges form a court and they could come to a unanimous decision, but there is no ruling out that in future they cannot. So if we deal with the vetting or the screening better, then we will not have come to this stage first. Under our U S M Unified Screening Mechanism, and that is the process dealt with by the police, the success rate is over 1%. We've never seen such a low rate of success in other parts of the world. Our own research division has compiled a simple paper to compare the success rate of refugee claims in different jurisdictions. Well, in the past, when cases were dealt with by U N C R, U H C R, the success rate could be 2%. Dr. Fernando Zhang, may I repeat, remind you once again that you're repeating your own arguments and also points made by members at the second reading stage. Now, if you continue to repeat yourself, I have no choice but to stop you. So please come back to the debate. I'm trying to explain my position to you, Chair. I am telling you the reasons why I don't think it is necessary to turn to a 2 J A bench. Now, if the screening or assessment is done properly, then there is no need to have a backlog of cases at all. Let's say if about 20% of the claimants can succeed, then now, now, I, I'm making a comparison with other jurisdictions. In other places, they can go up to 20, 30, even 60%. So let's use the low case scenario. If our assessment can be on a par with the assessment in other countries, then we would not have a 90% of them using J R to argue the case, and then we would not have a backlog of cases. The reason why? We have to consider why the success rate is so low at the assessment stage and, rather, the administration has chosen to amend the ordinance. Now, we should not undermine one of the procedures of J R because of a backlog of cases. This is wrong. You're not tackling the problem at source. Rather, Dr. Fernando Zhang, you've continued to repeat your own argument. I need to ask you to stop, Mr. Wu Chih-wai. Chairman. Yes, point of order? Call for call.
Wu Chih-wai, you.
Mr. Wu Chih-wai. Chairman. I'd like to seek your enlightenment on a technical issue, Chairman. The Secretary for Justice just now explained this amendment that is in relation to the High Court bench. There'll be a 2 J bench instead of 3, that's the background. So Dr. Fernando Zhang just now was explaining the efficiency of the change from a 3 J bench or 2 to 2 J bench. Why was he considered inappropriate? Is it that we should only focus ourselves on the interpretation of the wording of the amendment? Mr. Wu Chih-wai, you are veteran in the council. You know that at the committee stage, we should be looking at the C S A, and according to the rules of procedure, members should not repeat his or others' arguments, especially when we've spent quite some time on these points at the resumption of second reading debate, and Dr. Fernando Zhang has been citing the same argument at the committee stage. So I need to uphold the rule stringently. So if a member continues to repeat himself, I need to warn the member. And if he continues, I will have to discontinue his speech. Right, we need to address the issue. What exactly can we say and what we cannot say? Otherwise, if we put forward our own argument, well, perhaps the argument has been cited by other members, but it doesn't mean that I have been repeating my own argument. Of course, you can remind me if I'm repeating myself. Well, at the appropriate juncture, that is, if a member is repeating his own argument or other members' argument, I will give a reminder and inviting the member to come back to the topic. So this amendment involves application for leave or in J R cases. Instead of a 3 J A bench, we can have a 2 J A bench. And I think in relation to this change, it doesn't just relate to non-refundment claims but other appeal cases. So I don't think this issue relates only to non-refundment claims. But on the point of non-refundment claims, like Dr. Fernando Zhang said, is it that we are proposing this change simply to address the issue of backlog in courts? We don't know the effectiveness of this change in the long run, but then there is, after all, a fundamental change in our system. We don't know the merits or indeed the consequences of this change. However, if a 2 J A bench can hear and determine appeal applications or J R cases, then as the administration put it in the reply to members' questions, now, if a unanimous decision cannot be reached by a 2 J A bench, then an application can be made to reargue the case before a C A comprising 3 judges. In other words, we go back to the basic logic, that is, there should be 3 judges hearing such cases. This is how we uphold the highest level or highest standards of fairness in our judicial system as a fundamental principle. So by proposing this amendment, we need to ask ourselves whether this amendment can improve the court's efficiency. Well, the deputy judiciary administrator replied to us by saying, again, that the judiciary has no idea whether the situation can be improved. Courts are really passive in this matter. It depends on the case details received, and that relates to the preparation before the cases are taken to court. So before cases reach the courts, this stage is crucial. If the objective is to address the problem at the end of the chain, then the administration should deal with what happens before that. That is, the U S M undertaken by the Immigration Department and the Torture Claims Appeals Board and the resources available. So before the judiciary takes over, the administration should provide the necessary resources to tackle the problem. But we're not convinced from how the administration is handling the matter, how the backlog of non-refundment claims can be dealt with. So I think the Secretary for Justice should tell us and tell members of the public whether this is a stopgap measure. What is actually the philosophy of the amendment? If the amendment seeks to address the backlog of J R cases relating to non-refundment claims, then according to the Bar Association and also according to the deputy judiciary administrator's reply, the judiciary is in a passive position. Before the cases reach the judiciary, the administration should address issues relating to the Immigration Department's U S M and the resources available and other supporting measures, together with the appeal mechanism that comes after that, whether the claimants are given the fairest treatment. And then, after all these procedures, if the, if the claimant is still aggrieved, then he can apply for judicial review. The administration should make sure all these tasks are done properly to make sure we're giving fair treatment to, that, Mr. Wu Chih-wai, you are repeating your own argument. Please come back to the debate. Why am I repeating myself, Chairman? I'm asking the Secretary for Justice whether she is replying on behalf of the administration. I think you're repeating your argument, Mr. Wu Chih-wai. You've repeated at least two times. And during the resumption of second reading debate, you've also made the same argument. Now, please come back to the debate. Chairman. This amendment relates to improving the court's efficiency in dealing with these cases. With the rapid surge in the number of non-refundment claims coming to the court, there is a need to increase the efficiency of courts. And that is why, since it's coming from the administration, I think the administration should, yes, Dr. Junis Ho, please stop here. Point of order, said Junis Ho. Yes, point of order. You've repeated a number of times that Mr. Wu Chih-wai has been repeating himself, and he's still talking about principles. Please take a good look at this. We're talking about clauses 1 to 126 or 1 to 8. Mr. Ho, I understand your point. I am addressing that. Please sit down. Mr. Wu Chih-wai, please continue. Chairman. Chairman, if you're suggesting that we can't discuss the flaws of the mechanism, and we can't ask the administration to tell us how, apart from the judicial proceedings, things can improve? Well, I have reiterated that your argument has been made in the resumption of second reading debate. The administration already explained its position. If you're not happy with the answer, I'm sorry, Chairman. It's, we are debating on a bill. We are at the committee stage scrutinizing the amendment clauses. So please come back to that. Why is it that we're allowed to speak more than once during this stage? Because the administration can, is here to respond to our arguments. Right, but we're here to discuss and debate on the clauses as for the merits of the bill itself it should be dealt with in the resumption of second reading debate. Please come back. In other words, we can only debate on whether it's right or whether it's good to reduce the number of judges sitting on a bench from 3 to 2. We can do nothing but mince words here.
Wu Chih-wai, you.
Mr. Wu Chih-wai. In terms of seniority, I think we are coevals, and definitely you understand the work of the committee stage. Please continue. We must grasp every opportunity to make the administration answer our questions. In relation to bills with or without amendments, we need to discuss the consequences and the implications. And we have hands out And we have hands out for our proceedings so that we could truly understand the philosophy and the principle of the administration's efforts. Now, we're here to debate with the administration, but chairman, you're allowing the administration to hide behind, um, the, uh, bill and not to answer us. That is, what are the means available to address the backlog of non-refundment claim JR cases so that, so that the administration can revamp the existing mechanism? Mr. Wuchiwai, I think you're repeating your argument.
Sorry. Mr. Wu, you're repeating yourself here. You said at the beginning that this bill is not just about a non-refundment claims. It covers many other things as well. I think you are coming back to your previous arguments. If you carry on digressing, I'll have to stop you, Mr. Wu. On the amendments, what we're facing is for the government to change and to three JA bench, to three, uh, to two JA bench. And there will be implications. The implications would go far beyond, um, the issue of the non-refundment claims and the mountain in backlog of the non-refundment claims. I think the government doesn't have any intention to resolve, um, the backlog of non-refundment claims and the fact that, um, the claimants do not enjoy any speedy and efficient handling of the cases. With this mishandling of the situation, the government is creating, um, a confrontational situation and people are very, very unhappy about the situation. I'll let you go on record to make these points.
In my speech, I will just concentrate on part two of the bill, which seeks to amend section thirty four B of chapter four. Now, I'm talking about quite technical issues because if you look at the amendment here, there are three effects. One is to extend the use of a two JA bench to hear and determine. Number one, applications for leave to the Court of Final Appeal, CFI, against a decision made by CA consisting of less than three JAs. That is the first effect. The second effect of this amendment, which I'm talking about, I'm talking about section forty thirty four B, is to appeal against decisions made by the Court of First Instance to refuse to grant leave to apply for judicial review. Or there's a third effect, to grant just leave on terms pursuant to Order fifty three, Rule three subsection four of the Rules of the High Court. Now, however, if we look at the reason or, um, the phenomena which these, you know, amendments are trying to cure, I can only say that these amendments in most circumstances are hitting at a wrong note. Let me tell you the reason why. If we look at the statistics in the past four years, if we look at the, um, the application for leave to apply for judicial review in the Court of First Instance level, whereby only one judge could hear the judicial review application. Now, evidentially, the number of cases jumped from sixty. I'm talking just about the non-refundment claim. Because, Mr. President, I cannot, you know, shine away from quoting the non-refundment claim because it is for the sole reason, because of the increase in the non-refundment claim cases, that the judiciary has requested administration to amend this bill. Now, look at the two oh one six figure is sixty and the two oh one nine figure is three thousand seven hundred and twenty seven is a sixty times jump. Now, this amendment here, listen, this amendment here doesn't deal with this level at all. And you must admit that this doesn't, uh, uh, deal with this because it's a one-person, uh, hearing. Now, look at the second level and this is what the bill is going to cure. In the Court of Appeal level, the civil appeals, the non-refundment claim, uh, uh, jumped from one case, two oh one six, to three hundred fifty one in two oh one nine. Of course, the percentage increment is very high, but we are talking about three hundred fifty one case. And in the third level, the Court of Final Appeal Leave Application level, the number of cases jumped from nothing in two oh one six to three hundred eighty eight in two oh one nine. And of course, the latter two examples are the reasons which the judiciary have requested administration to amend the bill. But if we look at the absolute number of cases, we're talking about three hundred fifty one and three hundred eighty eight. And I'm sure these are not very mega figures, but the figure that come from, um, the Court of First Instance judicial review hearing is three thousand seven hundred and twenty seven. Now, what we are talking about is three hundred seven thousand cases. And why did it happen? Because this amendment merely does not hit the right note. Now, of course, I'm aware that there's a very high chance that this bill will be passed today. I'm just predicting, Mr. President. But without doing other things, this amendment alone will not cure the instance of this, you know, kind of say overwhelming of judicial review cases. Now, there are two things I want to remind the Secretary of Justice. In amending this bill alone, you are not give-
Hang on a second, Mr. Junis Ho. Point of order, uh, chairman. I've heard, um, four minutes of Mr. Kenneth Loong and he's basically talking about how these amendments cannot address, um, the, the issue. But on this particular issue, I think we have, uh, already passed, um, the debate. I haven't heard any CSA's. Right, you've stated your point of order. Please sit down. And Mr. Loong, will you continue, please?
Talking about the merit of the amendment. The committee stage amendment is to talk about the substantive provision of the law. And I'm talking about a substantive provision of the law. And I'm saying that the provision alone will not help. And Mrs., um, and Secretary for Justice, I, I will urge you to issue or ask the judiciary to issue guidelines to the tribunal, to the appeals tribunal, because I have mentioned it very briefly yesterday, Mr. President. If you remember, I did not spend a whole fifteen minutes setting out my argument because I want to leave it until today that it is the duty of the Secretary of Justice, if this section or this bill were passed, to remind the judiciary. Of course, you can only remind them. You cannot ask them to do anything. The judiciary has asked you to amend this ordinance. Most probably, they'll get this job done. But after they get this job done, it's not the end of this, you know, kind of exercise. They have to issue guidelines to the appeal tribunal so that the adjudicator in the appeal tribunal can do their job fairly and squarely in order to reduce the number of judicial review cases. The amendment here in the bill alone cannot do the job because we are talking about the Court of Appeal level and the Court of Final Appeal level when hearing these judicial review cases, only three hundred fifty one and three hundred eighty eight. And apart from that, uh, Mr. President, let me use another two minutes. I will finish my speech and, and, and don't, don't rush me. The other thing is, I think, uh, the Secretary of Justice should have a very firm stand to stop people from criticizing judges or, or, or anybody in the judiciary personally. And this is a very serious incident that I want to raise at this instance to the Secretary of Justice. You must enforce the law to protect the independence of the judiciary. And, Mr. President, I think, um, this is what I want to say. This provision alone cannot cure what the judiciary has in mind just to increase efficiency, to reduce the strain on manpower because we need a better composed appeal tribunal and better guideline to guide the adjudicators. Thank you.
Mr. Dennis Quo. Mr. James To.
Goh Ling-hung-yu.
Chairman, with regard to this amendment, Mr. James, I don't think we have the quorum here.
Goh Ling-hung-yu.
Mr. Dennis Quo. Have we formed the quorum? If I ask you to speak, certainly we have to form the quorum. But it wasn't a quorum when you asked me. Yes, there was a quorum, but one just stepped out. Well, yes, we have a quorum. I make sure that we have a quorum. You don't have to be so emotional. Are you going to speak?
Now, these amendments are basically changing, abandoning thirty four B five. One of the provisions is to add subsection three into the CSA. Subsection three of thirty four B. Of, of course, it is intended to deal with cases in which we need to have, um, three JA bench. For those who are familiar with the proceedings of the Court of Appeal, for those who are familiar with the workings of, um, the CA, uh, you would understand that the, um, three JA bench would hardly ever happen. It is, um, it may be happening on a very rare occasion. If it, if it did happen, I hope that the secretary would make available some information, some statistics, uh, since the word go, how many times did we have situations where we needed a three JA bench at the Court of Appeal? Under what circumstances would you have to invoke, um, thirty four, section thirty four B three, under which you need to have more than three, um, judges in the CA?
As far as I know, this has never happened before, but if it has, I hope the SJ can use this opportunity to explain on what basis or the criteria for the Court of Appeal to, uh, have more than three judges. In, uh, some cases, there are five judges hearing a case. And if one of the five cannot, uh, continue to hear a case, how will, uh, the court deal with, um, the rest of the case fairly? And for section thirty four B three?
...of those proceedings, so long as the number of members is not reduced to less than three.
That means if one of the five judges cannot continue to hear a case, then the remaining three or the remaining, no less than three judges will continue to, uh, hear the case. But as I said, I invite the SJ or the DOJ to explain under what circumstances will section thirty four B three and four will be used because, because in legal paper number CB four seven one four slash nineteen twenty, uh, the, uh, paragraph fifteenth explains the rationale behind this amendment.
...clarification on A, where a CA that consists of four JAs under section thirty four B subsection three of cap four, four JA bench.
I don't quite understand why it should be, uh, four because thirty four B three is talk about a five judge bench.
...has been heard by an uneven number of justices of appeal greater than three.
As you all know, a number that is more than three and uneven should be five. So, uh, the legal paper here is not too clear and it continues to talk about a four JA bench. But of course, it is explained.
...can not continue to hear an appeal.
Then it will become a four JA bench. And it's set out in the paper that-
...appeal, whether the appeal will be reargued before a three JA bench or a five JA bench and whether by virtue of the proposed amendment made to section thirty four B brackets five of cap four, the reargument arrangement before an uneven number of JAs not less than three will no longer be applicable to a four JA bench.
And that is the legal advisor to the BC would want the administration to explain. If one of the five judges cannot continue to hear a case, then that means only four is left. And if, uh, the, uh, bench cannot come to a unanimous view, then how should the case be dealt with? How should the case be reargued? And that was a view and also a point raised by the legal advisor to the bills committee. I hope the administration can address this point here. The SJ should take this opportunity to explain whether the point raised by the legal- The SJ should take this opportunity to explain whether the point raised by the legal advisor is indeed an issue, whether there is anything unclear. When there is a five JA bench and when one cannot continue to hear an appeal or case and if the remaining judges cannot come to unanimous view, how will the case be reargued? Of course, if we have five judges in the appeal court to deal with the case, I haven't yet to see to see such a case. And I don't know what cases will require a five JA bench. Now, if there are such cases, I hope the SJ can like to me provide us with information so that we can be made aware that in some cases a five JA bench is needed. For instance, for important constitutional cases involving significant constitutional issues in Hong Kong where we're very expeditious treatment is required, sometimes two judges will preside in the court of first instance. But when it comes to the Court of Appeal, if five JAs are required, then I don't know what circumstances were warrant that. And of course, when two, when the two JA bench is in the court of first instance, perhaps it is a very important issue involving public law or the bill of rights and or some very important criminal issue is at stake. And then one civil judge and one criminal judge will have to hear a case together. This has happened. Now, does that mean that when at the court of first instance, it is a two JA bench? Then at the CA, five or more judges are required. I'm sure many people would like to learn about this. All right. The judiciary has explained why this CSA is needed in paragraph fifteen of the paper. It is said that that is one of five JAs cannot continue to in an appeal.
这里有个type应该还an unanimous decision, my a unanimous decision in a civil appeal and the case needs to be reargued. The chief judge of the high court will be consulted on the relevant listing arrangement as necessary, taking into account the unique circumstances of each case.
I'm of the view that this is ambiguous and requires explanation by the judiciary. And that is what is meant by necessary arrangement. And I don't think this is clear in the paper. And it has not been clearly explained. What is meant by taking into account the unique circumstances of each case? I think this will go back to the very unique circumstance I just mentioned. Under what circumstances will a four JA bench or five JA bench be required? And what are the unique circumstances of the case that warrant or determine how the case should continue be dealt with? Well, it is submitted here that is only under very rare circumstances that a four JA bench or five JA bench is required. And it stated here that if really, if at all, that means it has never happened before and I myself have yet to encounter one. And this has happened before. I hope the administration can provide some information.
subsection three of cap four. That said, it is not the judiciary's intention to disapply the present reargument arrangement under section thirty four B five of cap four to a CA duly constituted pursuant to section thirty four B subsection three of cap four.
All right, section thirty four B five, what is it about and why do we have to refer to this section again? For those listening to our live broadcaster may not understand this at once. Section thirty four B five says.
has been heard by the court consisting of an even number of justices of appeal and members of the court are equally divided. The case shall on the application of any party to the appeal be reargued before and determined by an uneven number of justices of appeal, not less than three, before any appeal to the court of final appeal.
And this is the original clause in the bill and after the amendment. Now assuming that this CSA is passed, thirty four B five A will read.
Under subsection three or four, here's an appeal or application and 根据改埋就是 the members of the court are equally divided. The case shall on the application of any party or by order of the court made by its motion be reargued before and determined by an uneven number of justices of appeal, not less than three, before any appeal to the CFA under this ordinance or any other enactment.
Last time when this section was amended, it was in nineteen ninety five. There was an amendment to this section. The reason why we have to amend this section again, as I said, the SJ would like to cover a section thirty four B five under section thirty four B five. Now, I don't have enough time to discuss the amendment to section thirty four B five. But then in the paper, I just read out to you, it is said here that
for members' consideration, an amendment to clause six four of the bill.
All right, I I I'm going to be very quick. So clause six is going to amend this.
Forty four B subsection five, subsection A of cap four to ensure that the reargument arrangement under section thirty four B subparagraph five of cap four will apply to a CA.
Your time is up, Mr. Alvin Young. Chairman Deputy Chair, Mr. Dennis Quo. Has very meticulously uncovered previous information to assist our deliberation now. In fact, this bill has got five parts. Now, if we look at what each part is about and then we'll find out the across of the matter now. Part one, short title and commencement and that's fine. Part two amendments to high court ordinance. So two JA bench instead of a three two judge a C and then some of the views I can be done in writing. And also part three is amendments to the interpretation general clauses ordinance. And part four is to amendments to Chinese texts of certain provisions containing could not with reasonable diligence. And part five is just miscellaneous amendments. So let's take a look at these five parts in the bill and what they seek to address. Now these, you know, some parts may sound really frivolous. It may to do, it may be to do with the translated text or some omissions in previous drafting of the legislation. But what I want to address is miscellaneous provisions, the wording in this bill. Lump lumping these miscellaneous provisions in a single bill for handling here is totally logical. But why is it that when it comes to part two, changing the number of judges sitting on a bench, changing the court procedures would be put under the miscellaneous provisions bill as well, since it is such a crucial matter? It seems that, you know, if you sell a piece of bone, you give away the whole piece of meat for free. In a moral sense, in a rational sense, I think this should be carved out of from the bill. There should be another High Court Amendment Bill twenty nineteen for scrutiny by the council. Only that would be logical. However, the administration did not take this approach. Instead, they consolidated these miscellaneous amendments and put them under this bill titled miscellaneous provisions. Is the administration trying to muddle through? Or is it trying to suggest that these changes to the judicial system are so insignificant? Or is it both? Now, I talked about giving away the whole piece of meat for free when you buy a piece of bone. Now, part four of the bill relates to the Chinese text of defense provisions in various ordinances. This is common phrase could not with reasonable diligence have done something etcetera. Sometimes it's translated as etcetera, because these terms are were translated by officials. This bill seeks to standardize the Chinese text of these defense provisions to make it read. So it's just a technical amendment. And this would not cause any misunderstanding of the legislation by members of the public or by law enforcement agencies. Now, the problem is if you want to standardize the Chinese translation of this phrase for consistency, why do we still see inconsistencies in various ordinances? Division sixteen of part four, amend the amusement games center ordinance. The administration seeks to repeal the original translation to be replaced by another phrase. Another amendment relates to the Western Harbour Crossing ordinance. Again, it's now changed to. In fact, for part four of the of the bill, the Chinese translation of the defense provision varies. I'm not trying to be nitpicking, but if you want to have consistency in a Chinese text, then why is it that we still see amendments that have or rather inconsistencies that do not really cause any misunderstanding or misinterpretation? Now, if the law seeks to convey the same meaning, then the same wording should be used. However, I could easily point out some inconsistencies in these ordinances. Perhaps it's over worrying on my part. Say, if a flaw is identified in this twenty twenty legislative exercise, then you want to do away with the Chinese character thick and then you can put forward another bill to go through the three readings of the bill to address the minor drafting flaws. I'm not passing the buck to the administration. Well, I watched the playback of the bills committees meeting and I checked the minutes. No member raised any queries on the matter. But the administration asked whether there are questions. Of course, I don't think the blame lies with members themselves for failing to spot this flaw. After all, these are really minor drafting issues that doesn't change the meaning. However, if you want to convey the original meaning, you should you should standardize the text. And by allowing these inconsistencies and flaws to exist, it goes exactly against the original purpose of the bill. And this may cause the further amendment bill to be tabled in the future. I think the bone of contention isn't really the minor glitches in the text that I talked about, but rather part two of the bill. Part two can be divided into two sections. First, clauses three to five to amend sections two, four and five of the high court ordinance to repeal certain words. So that a CFI judge may act as the judge of the CA and a CFI judge may act as an additional judge of the Court of Appeal. In other words, this obstacle is removed so that a CFI judge and a JA judge may sit in the other CFI or CA courts for hearing cases. The other part of part two is really the spotlight here about reducing the number of judges sitting on a CA bench from three to two. I don't seek to repeat the points. We have thousands of cases relating to judicial review of non-refund claimants and it's really natural for the judiciary to be anxious. Simply put, this amendment would allow CFI and CA judges to provide mutual assistance so that with increase in manpower, they can clear the backlog sooner. However, if the bill is passed, will we come across a scenario in which two CFI judges would be hearing and determining case in the as a two JA bench in the Court of Appeal? We're not sure. And should this situation arises, I wonder if there would be any controversy? Well, in the Secretary for Justice's reply, I seek, I would like to have an answer to this question because there is shortage of judicial manpower. And that is why you have this reciprocal arrangement between the CA and CFI judges. For CFI, for two CFI judges to hear and determine a court of appeal case. Is that a desirable arrangement? Or is there any recommendation from the Department of Justice to avoid this situation? We know that such scenario is rare, but it's still a likely consequence. We know that such scenario is rare, but it's still a likely consequence of this amendment bill. So I wonder if what I mentioned could indeed happen. In fact, last year at the AJ, AJ LS panel, the judiciary already expressed that there will not be a separate queue for non-refundment claimants JR cases. In other words, even with the passage of the bill, we have no idea how much time would be reduced in handling these cases. On the contrary, there may be more problems stemming from this exercise and we're even more concerned. Secretary for Justice here should address our concerns. Again, I emphasize that I hope it's just over worrying on my part. In conclusion, I'd like to say that part two relates to a drastic overhaul of the judicial system. There should be a separate exercise and a separate bill should be tabled to address the issue. Part four of the bill, I emphasize there should be greater consistency so that we won't waste public money in another exercise in the future. Also, the Secretary for Justice should, I mean, the judiciary should also explain the efficiency of part two, whether it be more efficient with increased number of judges. Mr. Lam Chek Ting. Madam Deputy. On Statute Law Miscellaneous Provisions Bill twenty nineteen, my take is as follows. Mr. Elvin Young cited some provisions just now. There are five parts to the bill. Part two, uh, part two relates to amendments to the High Court Ordinance, cap four. So that a JA may act as an additional judge of the CFI and vice versa without physically sitting in the relevant court. And also to provide that a J, a two JA bench can hear and determine the following cases. I think other members already mentioned these cases, including non-refundment claims, which according to the administration and the pro-establishment camp are causing a huge backlog. Part three of the bill relates to amendment to section thirteen of cap one, interpretation and general clauses ordinance in relation to reference made to an ordinance may be made according to the title, short title, citation, number of chapter numbers, et cetera. The, this is a, these are technical amendments, they are not controversial. Part four, as mentioned by Mr. Elvin Young, relates to defense provisions and the amendment to the Chinese text. There was a case, Hong Kong SAR to Kong Hing Agency Limited, twenty oh eight, HAC four six two. There was an issue relating to the interpretation of the following phrase, could not with reasonable diligence have done something. That is, under some circumstances, the objective standard of what the defendant is reasonably expected to have done something. Well, these are longstanding legal concepts. However, when it comes to the Chinese text of this phrase, there are variations. Mr. Elvin Young cited some examples. I'm not going to repeat them. Because of these variations, the Department of Justice believes that there is a need to make amendments to standardize the translation. I believe he's just right. Let me remind you, Mr. Lam Chek Ting and other members as well. Well, this is the second week we're debating on the Statute Law Miscellaneous Provisions Bill twenty nineteen. Our time is precious. Members should not, at this stage, repeat arguments already made by other members. You don't need to go through every point. You just need to state whether you agree with the amendment clauses. Please make good use of the time.
Appreciate that. You don't have to repeat the other members' arguments. Madam Deputy, I'm not repeating their arguments. My views are similar to theirs and I go along with their views. I'm not repeating their views at all. I just like to point out that I do have my point of views. Mr. Elvin Young is a member returned from NTEs. I'm also, so am I. The fact that he has spoken on that doesn't mean that he, I cannot speak on this. Otherwise, the supporters, my supporters would feel that I'm being lazy and he's stating all the points and I don't make any points. Well, you are an experienced member. I'm here for the first term. I'm not experienced at all, Madam Deputy. I have to enforce the rules of procedure. If everyone would use your argument, then everyone would have to take the floor. I rest, I rest my case after, after these. I'll come back to my point. The pro-establishment members have been criticizing the rioting and so on, and they are repeating themselves. And they, it's not the case that they have one single representative to make the point. Right, let me come back to the bill. Mr. Elvin Young's point is correct. That you have to standardize the wordings, it hasn't gone into the detail enough. Unlike Mr. Young said, there is only one single instance of inconsistencies. Now, Madam Deputy, you keep asking us to look at the text. Road traffic ordinance, I kept three, seven, four, amendment sixty-three regarding the provision of information, section three, five. Even if, even with reasonable diligence. Now, we're talking about reasonable diligence. Mr. Elvin Young talked about the amusement game centers. Now, under cap four, four, seven, hotel and guest house accommodation ordinance, it talks about reasonable diligence and supervision. And RCHO exemption of license, it also uses reasonable diligence. Now, regarding the drug dependency ordinance, it also uses reasonable diligence. Karaoke ordinance, cap five, seven, three, section seventeen, it also refers to the reasonable diligence and supervision regarding the license supervision. Madam Deputy, Karaoke Establishment Licensing Ordinance, cap five, seven, three, Regulation Substitutue Legislation A also refers to reasonable diligence and supervision. I cite all these examples in order to show that this amendment is of a technical nature. The Secretary for Justice, whatever department we are talking about, should be overseeing all these amendments. I'm quoting you, Madam Deputy. They are trying to standardize the wordings. If this is your intention, you have to go the whole hog. Why do you make people feel that the, there are a number of officers in the Department of Justice are responsible for the amendments? We have the SJ here, Miss Theresa Chang. I'm sure that you have vetted the amendment here. And you should have raised some doubts since we are trying to standardize the use of words, the diction here to make them consistent. Maybe the Secretary of Justice has unique understanding of the Chinese language. In some cases, she would use thick, the verb, the verb thick in Chinese. Now here, habli gam guan, habli thick gam guan for reasonable diligence and supervision. My understanding of the Chinese language shows that there is, it would be enough to say habli lowlik for reasonable diligence and that would be good enough for the, for the wording. And we will make them consistent. Secretary Chang, you may say that you have omitted the inconsistencies and you're going to be submitting another statute law amendment bill to amend these Chinese versions to standardize the use of words there, therein. Madam Deputy, there are other parts to the bill that are also of technical nature. Our focus is the, a number of judges on the bench at the Court of Appeal. We have already stated our views during the second reading resumption debate. But why do we change the three JA bench to two JA bench? I think it has to do with our attitude towards this bill. This is not a miscellaneous amendment. It is, it represents a change of policy. The, a better course of action is for you to submit another bill to the council for us to scrutinize the details before we bring this up here at this full council. I think this would be far better to the, to the proposal. All these minor inconsistencies should be separated out from this major issue for the miscellaneous provisions. I don't think they will be controversial at all. And we should focus our attention on the controversial part of the matter. Like, for example, the, the number of judges on the Court of, Court of Appeal, I don't propose to repeat the points regarding the three JA bench versus two JA bench. I'm sure everyone is fully aware that for a two JA bench to hear and determine the non-refundment claims, it is not good enough. I think we've always been of the view that there should be three JA bench to consider all these claims because these would have a bearing on the, on the well-being of the declaimants and they may be liable to, to be subject to torture and, and all the rest of it, that there should be a third judge or the CA to hear these cases. But the pro-establishment members said that the court is under ever increasing pressure and they are convinced that we shouldn't have a two JA bench instead. In the bill, there is a reference to that, Madam Deputy. Now, for the two JA bench, if they do not see eye to eye on a particular case, then there can be a reargument of the case before a CA consisting of not less than three judges. And that would be replicating the efforts of the two JA bench. And if anything, this would prolong the, the hearing process. Would that be running counter to the original intent of the legislative amendments? If the claimants would have to be subject to these long and arduous court proceedings, would it be a desirable situation? As so much I have to say, thank you, Madam. Dr. Fernando Jim. Madam Deputy, I find this wholly regrettable that we are here impervious to common sense. Basically, we are forbidden to do many, many things. This bill will have tremendous implications, like Mr. Elvin Young said. And we're dealing with the non-controversial minor issue, but we are inserting in a fair and meaty item here. I'm not going to talk about the High Court amendments. I like to focus my attention to part five. And the mentally incapacitated word. This affect cap five oh five, social worker registration ordinance in the schedule. Somebody can, cannot become the registered social worker. There are a number of criminal offenses there. Now, if registered social worker commits certain offenses, they will be struck off the, the register. And these offenses have to do with the mentally disabled people. Cap two, four, three, childcare services ordinance, fifteen A, one refers to the prohibited persons, persons who are prohibited to become such, to become the childcarers. When these people are in breach of the offenses listed in the schedule, they will be regarded as prohibited persons. These prohibited persons cannot become childcarers. In the schedule, all the offenses are listed there. Some of them have to do with mentally disabled people. All the offenses relating to disabled people include burglary with disabled people and all the indecent acts or sexual intercourse with mentally disabled women. And also abducting mentally disabled women and procure them to engage in vice activities and also to take them to certain premises, ships and so on, to engage in sexual acts. This would also affect cap four, seven, five, the ex-prisoner ordinance. Under section twenty-three, it provides for any of the offenses in the schedule. But it must be punishable for between three years and six years in the schedule. Some of the offenses have to do with the mentally disabled people, like burglary with mentally disabled and unlawful sexual acts with mentally disabled. I like buckery with mentally disabled and unlawful sexual acts with mentally disabled.
So. The proposed amendment will be related to Cap two hundred Crimes Ordinance. The definition for mentally incapacitated persons, for instance, Section one two five. Any man who has unlawful sex with a woman who is mentally incapacitated is liable to imprisonment for ten years upon conviction. And I think the amendment to the statute law ordinance is to align with the drafting in provisions related to the term mentally retarded persons. Now, I support this amendment because the term mentally retarded is already obsolete. Of course, in English, at first it was mentally retarded. And then it was changed to mentally handicapped. And in our legislation, we use the term mentally handicapped to describe people with mental impairments. However, under the Convention of Rights of Persons with Disabilities of the U N, pointed out that we should be people-oriented. We should not, we should not mark. We should not focus on the disability itself. In the past decade, in developed countries, they no longer use mentally handicapped or mentally retarded to describe a person. For the past decade or so, they always use the term people with mental disability. So men should come first, men are equal. Although some may have some handicaps or impairment. So mentally handicapped is a term discriminatory in nature. And it should have been amended a long time ago. So the amendment this time is not comprehensive enough. In our legislation elsewhere, there are provisions still using the term mentally handicapped. This time, our term used is mentally incapacitated persons to replace mentally retarded handicapped. I think we're just shifting the problem to elsewhere. Mentally incapacitated. The definition of this term in our current legislation is rather confusing. And the scope can be widened to such an extent that I'm worried whether with the current amendment, it may lead to unforeseen circumstances. That is, if we can define people that are mentally incapacitated in this way, then if it is the definition used in Social Workers Registration Ordinance and also supervision of rehabilitated persons, then people may be inadvertently caught. Some may no longer be eligible to work as a registered social worker. And some cannot work as a childcare workers. Now, let me explain the source of this term mentally incapacitated. This is directly related to Cap one three six Mental Health Ordinance. Under this ordinance, mental incapacitation mainly refers to two categories of persons. One, those who are mentally handicapped. Second, people who are deranged. So-called mentally deranged is a medical term. It is dealing with, a mental disorder is the term used here. It is a medical concept. Medical disorder will include people suffering from the following conditions. Of course, people with mental illness, second. It can also cover other aspects. The Supervision Order or the Guardianship Ordinance has got a definition for people who are mentally incapacitated. Because if a person is defined as being mentally incapacitated, then relevant persons, including their family members, can apply for a guardianship order. And then the Guardianship Board in its website has explained what is meant by mental incapacitation. People suffering from dementia, from, these are people with severe cognitive disorders. Second, people with mental illness. And four, people who have suffered brain injuries as a result of an accident or a stroke. So for people who are mentally incapacitated, will they include people or people with autism with an I Q of over seventy? Now, seventy, an I Q seventy is the threshold. Those of an intelligence quotient over seventy would not be regarded as suffering any mental handicap. So we have three categories, mild, moderate, and severe. So the Guardianship Board has made very clear that those of an I Q over seventy will not be regarded as suffering from any mental handicap. Well, if a person has an I Q over seventy and has autism, then under the board, such a person can be regarded as someone who has a mental disorder or who is mentally incapacitated. And this is also covered under the definition for mental disorder. So we have to be very cautious here. Because the scope is very wide. Mild mental handicap. Does that mean that this person cannot commit any sex act or make the decision to engage in sex? I think this is ridiculous because we have people with mild mental handicap who have got married and have children. I myself know many of these people. So I've read out a number of offenses which I'm not going to repeat. Now, if these offenses are to apply to these people, it's ridiculous. Because we are not not just talking about people who are mentally impaired. Even people suffering from autism can be regarded as being mentally incapacitated. The Guardianship Board also says that people suffering from anorexia can be regarded as having a mental disorder or mentally incapacitated. And the definition of mental incapacitation can include someone suffering from anorexia. So we have high-function autistic persons, those suffering from Asperger, or even people with anorexia. They can be regarded as being mentally incapacitated. So if someone has sex with one of them, then the Social Worker Registration Ordinance and also Childcare Service Ordinance are amended by this bill. There will be people who will not be able to register as a social worker or to work as a childcare worker. Isn't it a bit too extreme? I think we might have make the definition rather fuzzy. Because even someone who is mentally defective doesn't mean that he cannot have sex with another person. This is utterly ridiculous. If we do so in law, then we will be against the U N Convention for Rights of Persons with Disability. Under Section twelve of the Convention, everyone is equal in front of the law, including people with all sorts of impairments or disabilities. So we know full well that we are a party to the U N Convention on Rights of Persons with Disabilities. And if we pass the bill, and we are depriving these people of their rights, and I don't think the bill should be passed. Mr. Alvin Young. Mr. Jeremy Tam. I don't intend to repeat arguments. Can you wear your microphone properly? Thank you, Chair. I have no intention to repeat arguments already made by members because I believe we have had sufficient discussion on those points already. However, on the clauses themselves, I have some observation. And there are things I don't understand. I hope that through this debate, the S J can then learn about them. And then, yes, Dr. Fernando Jung, I don't think we have a quorum for the meeting.
Chairman Hu Yun.
Mister Jeremy Tam. Chairman. I was saying that I'm not going to repeat the points made by other members or their concerns in relation to judges and also the definition of mentally defective persons. Rather, as I read the bill, I noticed some particular points, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-five, for example. These are amendments repealing the words with reasonable diligence. For section thirty, I see there are quite a lot of provisions. So I think this is packaged exercise. Say, for some ordinances, a certain provision may be repealed. Say, section, class twenty-eight to amend section nineteen of the amusement game center ordinance, cap four, three, five. Section nineteen, three B, reads in Chinese as follows. And then section twenty, to be amended again. Section twenty-three B, Chinese text, will be repealed. So for the amendments in clause twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the same phrase is to be repealed. However, what is substituted is different. In class twenty-eight is, in class twenty-nine is. In other words, you're going to scrap the phrase. Now, you're going to scrap an apple or replace an apple with an orange. But now you have an orange together with a tangerine in substitution. I try to understand what it means. Well, I like to frequent amusement game centers, so I pay particular attention to the AGCs. But nowadays, for AGCs, they no longer have video games, machines. Rather, it's kind of a de facto casino, so secretary. If you just visit an AGC, you would know. Anyway, coming back to sections nineteen, twenty of cap four, three, five, the amusement game centers ordinance. I try to understand the rationale. Now, for section nineteen, it is, it relates to offenses in relation to a license. Now, if you breach a certain condition, for example, if you operate against the conditions of a license, and if you, well, I'm reading from the Chinese text. If you operate, manage, or in other ways operate in amusement game center, and if you, if you breach the above provisions, you'll be committing offense. Unless you can prove that you have exercised reasonable control as far as practicable and reasonable. And then you've substituted the Chinese text with. So why don't the words appear in the Chinese text here? That's because the previous sentence already included, includes the words. So there is no need to have the superfluous phrase again. Section twenty, the same, the same goes with section twenty. Section twenty relates to an offense in relation to gaining admission to a licensed AGC. And for the same reason, a minor below the age of sixteen enters an AGC constitutes an offense. Actually, not playing video games there, merely gaining entry will be an offense. So again, the Chinese text reads. And then it is substituted with. That is, even with reasonable diligence. So in other words, the phrasing of the provision is such that you need to have a verb in Chinese that is to make an effort. And that is why I understand you need to include these two Chinese characters in substitution of the original phrase. The original reads. The same meaning applies, that is, with reasonable diligence. Whether you play Street Fighter or Pac-Man in the AGC, it still refers to the premises of the AGC. So it's still within, reasonably within your remit. That is, whether you have exercised reasonable diligence. There are boundaries. Well, you can't say that you exercise diligence not within the reasonable manner. Well, this sounds somewhat gilding the lily, but it, it works. But now it reads. What is the difference here? Is there unreasonable diligence? Would you say that somebody tries to exonerate oneself with unreasonable diligence? I'm trying to figure out the rationale behind the amendment. The Chinese original reads. In other words, you can't rely on this defense provision by suggesting that you exercise unreasonable diligence. We need to question whether it's necessary to put the word reasonable here. But the phrase before that reads reasonable supervision or control. Well, call it gilding the lily, I just let it be because it exists in the original provision. However, the difference between why do we need to amend the original? That is, as far as possible, as far as legally possible, you exercise diligence, then doesn't it constitute a defense already? Why do we need to use the Chinese phrase? And for the Chinese terms, do they mean the same? You amend the phrase only because the original is ambiguous. But then, the original phrase is very clear. It means, as far as reasonable, he has exercised diligence. I think we're taking it down a notch. In other words, the person has exhausted every means in exercising diligence. Well, Mister Jeremy Tam, I think you are repeating your argument. Please continue. Chairman, I don't think I am repeating myself. I don't think we've touched on these two terms, and because means exhausting every means. Whereas the Chinese term means you just work hard. You can work hard without getting good results in exam. And try and also do your level best, that's something else. But can you, Chairman, ask members not to talk among themselves here? Order, please. Well, I don't think it's hurt you, Mister Wang Ting Guang. So like I said, well, working hard is just a two-dimensional word. But if you try your level best, that means you've done your best. I need the Secretary for Justice to explain in a moment the rationale behind this amendment. And next, let me come to clause twenty-seven to amend section twenty-one offenses in relation to certificates of exemption and certificates of compliance. Here, the Chinese text would be repealed to be substituted by. No, my same query follows. Why do we need reasonable before the word diligence? In other words, in various ordinances covered by the bill, you need to add the word reasonable. Can we say we are holding a reasonable meeting here? And I hope that the members would exercise reason not to chitchat here. So must we put the word reasonable before diligence every time? Secretary, please explain to me in a moment. And then clause twenty-five to amend section twelve obligations given information relating to the driving of vehicles. The Chinese text and I think it sounds right. It's in the, in the same vein. And then it will be substituted with. So reasonable diligence, that's all right. The original reads after exercising reasonable diligence, so-and-so. And it will be substituted with this phrase, even after you exercise reasonable diligence. Now, I wonder if it makes a big difference. I'd like the Secretary to explain to me in a moment. I think that's all for me for the time being. May I ask members to note, first of all, in accordance with the rules of procedure, at the committee stage, members should not deliberate on the principles of the bill. Members therefore should not repeat the arguments already made during the debate on second meeting of the bill. Committee stage is different from the council meeting. And the clause-by-clause scrutiny already completed in June this year at the Bills Committee meeting. This is a time when we have a joint debate on the clauses and the amendment. You need to focus on first whether you support the administration's amendment on clause six. And second, for clauses with and without amendments to stand part of the bill, whether you support that. Members should not repeat the arguments on the detailed deliberations of the Bills Committee. We have a long agenda and the council's function is not just to scrutinize bills here. I'm not going to allow members to speak on each and every clause of the bill. At the same time, I need to strike a balance between respecting members' rights to address the council and allowing the council to fulfill its function. At appropriate times, I would remind members to come back to the debate. I have the constitutional duty as chairman of the committee stage of the whole council to ensure that the council can complete deliberations on the bill within the reasonable timeframe. And please, members are also obliged to make good use of the time here.
And thanks for the reminder. I promise I.